Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting in the Northridge Local Schools Board of Education to order at six thirty one P M. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Lewis, please call the roll. All right, Mrs. Bamelin.
Here.
Mrs. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Present.
Mr. Schrock.
Present.
Mr. Wiggins.
Here.
Our mission in Viking values. Our mission statement is empowering all students to reach their fullest potential. Our Viking values are trust, leadership, communication, collaboration, accountability, integrity, and respect. And we adhere to the see something, say something campaign. First order of business is approving the minutes from our May fifteenth regular meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mrs. Bamelin.
Sorry.
Seconded by Mr. Hart, do we have any discussion, any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, Mr. Lewis, please call the roll. Mrs. Bamelin.
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yeah.
Mr. Schrock.
Yeah.
Mr. Wiggins.
Yes.
All right, um, it's not printed on the agenda, but also in uh. One point five, we um. Deferred at our last meeting, the approval of the minutes from the March twenty seventh special meeting. I have an emotion to approve the minutes from the special meeting on March twenty seven.
I'll make those.
Motion by Mrs. Bamelin.
Second that as well.
Seconded by Mr. Hart. Any discussion, correction to the minutes from March twenty seventh special?
Just want to thank Mrs. Bamelin for bringing that to my attention this afternoon and uh.
You're welcome.
If we're gonna have that tonight.
Yeah, I apologize, like. It slipped my mind to send that out. Thank you.
Okay. Any other additions, corrections of the minutes? Hearing none, Mr. Lewis, please call the roll. Mrs. Bamelin.
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger.
Yeah.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Schrock.
Yeah.
Mr. Wiggins.
Yes.
Hey. Our consent agenda. Get back to the back. Yes, consent agenda uh for the treasurer's recommendations, uh six point one. Um, it's to uh. Approve the monthly financial reports as submitted and approved by the finance committee. Also to approve the following donations, the recommendation uh to um. From uh the car farms uh for the uh. Northridge Ag Education FFA in the amount of one hundred dollars, a donation from Lynn Fruit Farm. Uh, to the FFA for two hundred dollars, donation Parsons Trucking LLC for the FFA for two hundred. Donation to uh from Amasing. I may say amazing, that's not spelled right, Amazing Meats, we'll have to fix that spelling. Is it? I thought it was a Z. I thought it was a Z.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, yeah, right, yes, amazing, yes.
All right, we'll fix that, Amazing Meats. A FFA banquet of two hundred dollars. A donation from Parsons Construction LLC to the FFA for two hundred dollars. A donation from Granville Milling Company uh for the Northridge FFA at an amount of one hundred dollars. A donation from Shepherd Church of the Nazarene uh for Northridge Grand Piano. Thank you, Mr. Lewis, any questions for Mr. Lewis about his consent agenda items? Mr. Schmidt.
Uh, item seven point one is a lease agreement for our postage machine. Uh, seven point two is for uh extended summer services and tech support. Yeah, tech support during the summer. Uh, seven point three is our athletic supplemental coaches uh putting uh many of our spring, spring coaches. Sorry, putting many of our fall coaches in place this spring, so we're ready in the fall. Uh, and knowing that they'll, they'll do things over the summer. We have a continued list of volunteers, and again, great to see additional volunteers as we're doing a variety of. Of field trips and activities. Uh, graduation list is included uh for your approval, this is. Uh, of course, pending completion of all established graduation requirements. So those seniors need to hang in a few more days and make sure they uh. Don't, don't stop their work too early. Uh, we have classified substitute approved in seven point uh six. Uh, we do have a couple fundraisers uh and a shout out to the boys' basketball team uh as they're working to do youth camps and. And build their program and then also uh to Mrs. Roberts, who continues to do a lot of great things with the Viking innovations. Uh, and, and uh activities that her students are, are doing uh to self-support the, and. Raise, raise money for materials for their program. Uh, so they can design and create more. Uh, we do have a uh list of uh resignations here. And you will note uh from the preview that went out, there's, there's a sixth rec uh. Resignation that came in today, uh Amber, Amber Cota. Uh, we um, Amber is, Amber is taking a job closer to home. Um, and then I had updated the board on, on the other pieces there. Uh, approved field trip requests in seven point nine, we have a few uh. Opportunities. Um, first uh. First grade going to. Sorry, I don't have the, sorry, kindergarten going to. Wildwood Park in Granville and then um. The forces of motion at Lego Land with science. I'm sorry, Mrs. Beaver, I forget what grade. That second, second grade, yeah, that's right. Um. We have classified contracts for uh two-year contracts per uh. Ohio Rice Code and the, the process, all of those have been. Follow that process. Seven point eleven, we have home instruction hours, uh we have a variety of students that are qualifying for extended school year services. Uh, and those number of hours per student is listed there, obviously, we didn't list the student's name. Um, and we will work to have intervention specialists uh provide those, those required hours. Next section is certified uh contract renewals, uh these teachers have all completed. Uh, they're appropriate, have been evaluated completely. Uh, appropriately using the Ohio Evaluation System and recommendation from the building principal for those contracts, so we have. Our uh people that are eligible for one year. Eligible for two-year and three-year contracts. As well as uh staff members that are eligible for five-year contracts. You'll notice on seventeen, seven point one six approves certificate continuing contracts. Uh, Ashley Carr was previously on the list for a five-year con- contract, but moves to continue contract, she had met. The uh obligations in the collective bargain agreement to notify me at the beginning of the year of her um. Desire for a continuing contract, we had uh. Put her on the five-year license down to continuing, but uh Mrs. McJussie and uh Mr. Smith both. Uh, endo- endorse the continuing contract for that piece. We also have our school psychologist uh who uh recommending for a three-year contract. And that, that um seven point one seven was in addition, I apologize to, to misdrop when we were working through the uh. Contract renewals, there was an other tab on my uh spreadsheet and other normally is notes and details, but in this case it had. Catherine Drop on there because she isn't in the, in the teaching list, so I apologize that I had missed her um. But we are. Very happy with her services and uh more than willing to extend the three-year contract to her. And those are the consent items.
Hey, do we have any questions for Mr. Schmidt regarding his consent agenda items? Hearing none, do we have any changes to the consent agenda? Hearing none, can I get a uh motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Schrock. Seconded by Mrs. Krieger. Any additional discussion? I'd just like to, to say thanks for our uh. All of our donations, it was quite the list. Always appreciate supporting our uh. Students and programs.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same, all of them, all of them are local businesses, so that's awesome.
Yeah, very grateful for that, and of course, congratulations to our graduating class. Any further discussion? Okay, um, let's have all in favor of uh. Approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passes without dissent. All right, do we have any scheduled visitors, Mr. Lewis? Hmm, no.
No, we don't have any scheduled, Mrs. Beaver or Breckville or both will, will highlight during the academic update.
Uh, any staff comments on specific agenda items?
No.
Do we have any unscheduled visitors? No, sir. Okay. Moving right along, our committee and boards uh, our committee reports for our board liaison, academic liaison, Mrs. Krieger, Mrs. Bamelin, excuse me.
Um, we met a couple weeks ago as our end of. The year wrap up, we had. A few people missing, but we did split up into groups and kind of went over um. What's working in the district, what's. Could be improved and just bounced, did a. Little exercise of bouncing ideas and suggestions off of each other and thought it was a very. Successful meeting, we also had some fun with. Chat GPT, a little artificial intelligence. The future of. Everywhere. And that's pretty much it.
Perfect, thank you. Four point two, our community development liaison representative, Mr. Hart, Mr. Schrock.
I don't really have much to report, other than uh Mr. Schmidt or Mr. Lewis, do we have? Any progress on getting together with the townships?
We have a call out to Liberty Township, which I think.
Oops, we have a, a call, we've been playing phone tag back and forth, Liberty Township, they are looking at some, some tiffs that uh. Mr. Wiggins alerted us to on their agenda, so I think that will be our next scheduled meeting um from that standpoint, yeah.
And uh I, I will report related to community development. Last week, Mink Street was closed from Beaver Road up to Jug Street. Uh, the purpose of that, it appears was primarily to put. Uh, to replace really uh an existing culvert at a creek that's just north of Beaver. Uh, anticipating the five lanes, they put in uh concrete, huge concrete. Um, in terms of a biodector or a larger culvert or whatever. It's uh quite impressive and it shows that it's just a matter of time until, you know, Mink Road isn't gonna look anything like what we remember it and. I bring that up here just because. Uh, Mink is. I think of it as a par five or maybe a par five and a par three from our district. Uh, just, just slightly to the west, so. Um, when you can measure things that closely. Um, development can't be far away, so. That's what I got.
Thank you. Uh, facilities, Mr. Schrock and Mr. Hart.
So is committee Matt and Mr. Lewis presented. Detailed diagrams and plans for the middle school uh. Plumbing project such as it is. And also uh went over in a considerable detail the current plans for the stadium project. Uh, anticipating, I think some, but they're still waiting on, on some drawings to come back and things like that, but. Um, Mr. Schmidt was in attendance as well and um, I think committee got a pretty good overview of everything that's going on there. Um, following up on a suggestion from Mr. Bamelin, Mrs. Bamelin a few meetings back. I, I did bring up the issue of, of lining. Uh, s- sidewalks or something like that and other signage. On our driveways and um Mr. Lewis and, and uh Mr. Liggett. Um, it seemed like a commit, a, a, a. Consensus of the, of the committee, we didn't have any vote or anything like that, but there didn't, there didn't, there wasn't anybody that said it wasn't a good idea, and so uh. I believe Mr. Lewis and Mr. Liggett are gonna be looking into that.
Um.
With Mr. Jared.
With, with Mr., yeah, with, with Jared, who was also at the meeting. Uh, just trying to anticipate traffic patterns, walking patterns, things like that, so. I'm glad that's moving along. And on another issue, we did get a report back that apparently the uh soy method that was advocated by one of our uh. Uh. One of our constituents for, for driveway ceiling um isn't, isn't something that they were able to, to find anything. Other than it, maybe there's some super secret milit- military option where they're, where they're doing something like that. Uh, but uh probably, probably not coming to Northridge anytime soon. So, um. That's the uh report on uh facilities committee.
Excellent, thank you. Finance committee, Mrs. Bamelin or myself?
Um, finance man uh reviewed the, the presentation on the five-year forecast that Mr. Lewis will be presenting tonight. I'm gonna highlight that. Um, discussion on how the administrative team is planning the twenty-three, twenty-four school year budget. And the district is working very hard on a balance, on balancing the budget. And the five-year forecast and the financial reports were both approved by the committee. That's it.
Great, thanks so much. Legislative, legislative liaison, Mr. Schrock, Mr. Hart.
Mr. Schrock, do you have anything uh you wanna bring forward on that? Um, I uh. Actually was, was joking a little bit, I was talking to Mr. Lewis as I arrived at Top Golf this morning. And uh I said that um, well, Mr. Lewis, I have to excuse me, I'm gonna do my uh, I'm gonna do my meeting prep. Uh, and walked into the facility, a little bit, I know that one of the state senators would be holding a uh. A, a social, for lack of, I mean, that's what they called it on the signage. Uh, in, in the four bays, just, just to the side of me and uh. Uh, when the senator, of course, made remarks, uh, I don't remember his name. Uh, but when he made his remarks to the group, he uh commented on what was apparently, he's on the Senate Education Committee, and he commented on how. Uh, diligently they're working on, on moving the, this legislation through uh toward a vote. But uh, um, he seemed to express a little bit of frustration that things weren't moving faster. Um, I think he's, I think he's anxious to get some of those anti-school provisions enacted. Uh, at least that was my uh. That was the vibe I got from, from listening to him, but. Um, I'm sure they'll be going into um hiatus. For some kind of a summer recess and a July fourth recess and a Labor Day recess. So I, I would guess not a lot's gonna happen before fall, but who knows, maybe those surprises. Um, anyway, um, they're still working on, they're, they're just in committee process, I guess. That's the synthesis I could make uh of all the, all the reports I get, so. So I did do board prep, board meeting prep.
Yeah. I got a phone message today from Troy Balderson. Guess he's having a. Meeting today, right now as we are talking and. So. Be interesting to find out what he had to talk about. Tonight, but.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Well, thank you both. Um, policy liaison, uh Mrs. Krieger, Mr. Schrock.
Uh, no update for that, except that tonight will be our second reading of policy updates.
Great, thank you. Last but not least, our wellness and insurance liaison representative, Mrs. Bamelin, Mrs. Krieger.
Um, insurance uh meeting happened on Friday, May twelfth. Uh, we found out that the first proposals and rates were significantly, have significantly increased. Uh, the past, the district has only experienced minimal increases. Um, oh, year after year. And in an effort to find the best benefit package for our employees and the district. Uh, we are going to be exploring the insurance market. Um, the district will need. To be working on this in the next few weeks. And this will allow us to do an open enrollment for August, so it's kind of critical, we're in a short timeline, but. We need to do it to make sure that we have the best package. And cost for our staff.
Excellent, thank you. All right. Number five, academic updates.
Uh, I'm gonna start with uh, oops, thank you. Uh, we have two updates and Dr. Harrison's gonna help with the first one, and then I think Mrs. Beaver is gonna talk a little bit about the elementary update. Um, but the first one, I'd like to invite Dr. Harrison to share a little bit about um some summer learning opportunities. Uh, that we have.
Sure. Um, we have three that I'm gonna talk about this evening, um, the first one is camp invention, so we're excited, this is the first summer that we're gonna bring it to Northridge. It's a week-long STEM suburb, summer camp. And um, so here the participants get to grow in their confidence and their problem-solving skills as they create um some innovative um inventions. Um, it's led by our own teachers and it's here on campus and um it is a cost to the families, but we did have scholarships available to the students. Um, who may not have the financial ability to participate. The second one is Kids Read Now, this is the third summer that we're offering this to students um. In our K five, for our K five students, um, they will get to choose eight books from a list of over a hundred and fifty books. Um, the teachers help them choose, so it's at their reading level and it's within their interest range. Um, it also comes with a writing prompt, a book for writing prompts in the summer and it comes throughout the summer, um. It, it helps encourage them to read throughout the summer. We also um were able to extend this opportunity to middle schoolers, so even though it's not through the Kids Read Now program. Um, we let them select books as well for um. At their reading level. And then we're also going to offer summer school this summer, um, it is by invitation only and we are going to select students based on. Um, multiple data points, um, and so we will select the students that um we have the capacity to do because we only have a limited number of teachers. Um. Who are going to be able to um provide that service this summer, so we had to be very selective about um who we were able to invite. And so we're still working on finalizing those plans, but those should be finalized this week. Any questions about those summer learning opportunities? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Harrison. Uh, Mrs. Beaver, would you like to start off our building reports with giving us some information about what's happening at the elementary?
Good evening. Um, we have a lot going on, as you know, it's the last few weeks of school. We are happy to say that we successfully completed all state testing and district-wide testing, yay. That is overdone with, um, and we'll be looking at that later to start the fall. Um, other than that, we've had a lot of just end of the year things going on, our fourth and fifth graders had their music performance, which highlighted drums and vocals on April twenty-seventh, it was very well received. Um, we had our annual art show, which was a little bit different this year, it was a great success. Uh, silent auction, we had lots of cool projects that every class participated in and they were all sold thanks to our community. Um, and a benefit of our art program, so we're excited about that. Uh, fifth graders went to outdoor camp and had a fabulous time, they had the best weather ever for a couple days, it was great to see them go back and experience that this year. Um, they had a great day. And then uh moving forward, our fifth graders, next week, they're gonna be going to visit the middle school, so they can kind of see what sixth grade and middle school is like, that's on Thursday, the twenty-fifth. Um, tomorrow night, I'm welcoming all the incoming kind of our news in, if they'd like to come tour and see our fabulous building. Um, and my leadership team, our leadership team's gonna be giving tours and things to kind of make them feel good about next year. And then the last week of school, we're gonna be doing move-up day, so all kids will move from whatever grade they are now to the next year's grade and meet all the teachers, see classrooms just again to try to. Set the stage for next year, so again, we have a lot going on, thank you.
Perfect, and when you talk about your leadership team, you mean your student leadership team, right?
Yeah, our student leadership team, mostly fourth and fifth graders, yes. Yep.
Any questions for Mrs. Beaver? All right, uh, a few other highlights from the building department reports, kind of keeping along that idea of transitioning for next year. Uh, our eighth grade students are gonna get a chance to participate in a high school uh transition panel where some high school students. Uh, will present different things about the high school day and then also answer questions that eighth graders have. Uh, so helping with that transition piece, we just talked about the fifth grade uh transition is also uh happening. Getting a chance to, to meet uh sixth grade staff and, and whatnot, we've had um, we have student awards banquet uh coming up. Uh, in June, um, celebrating different academic successes uh throughout the year and honoring our students with those awards. And our eighth graders are getting ready for their trip to uh Dearborn, Michigan, um. I was on a. Sorry, my memory is fuzzy, but I was on a, either a conference call or in a meeting recently where this came up, uh where s- um. I remember now where we were talking about, do your eighth graders get to go to Washington DC, and we said we're, we're off the cycle because of COVID, but we're getting back on there, but this year we're doing a trip to. To Dearborn and they happen to be from Michigan and had gone to the museum several times and said it's a absolutely fabulous. Uh, trip and, and our kids will really, really learn a lot, so I think that's, that's great to be getting to go to the, the Henry Ford Museum, I'll be excited to hear about their trip. Uh, hopefully it'll be a little less eventful travel-wise than our, our Kings Island trip was on Friday, but um wanted, wanted to share a special shout out to our seventh grade staff. Um, who, who helped um. Support that as buses were broken down and, and late and also uh to, um, I sent an email to the board, but uh to um our driver. Uh, Mr. Van Kirk, um. Van Kirk, yes, um, for hopping in a bus Friday evening and, and headed down there to save the day.
Yeah.
Um, I know the middle school was sending over a special thank you as well to him, so um, team effort, oh. Thanks. Switching back cameras, um, high school has a lot of end of the year celebrations going on. Uh, and those are listed there, and they also, similar to elementary, middle school and high school, finished up, finished up their testing cycle. Um, and working on transitions for, for next year. Uh, also, uh, a last minute addition to highlight in area athletics, you have in front of you. Um, our girls' track team won the LCL championship and boys' runner-up, and we have many pe- many uh groups moving on to, to the next round, so. Congratulations, congratulations to them.
Yeah.
Uh, as far as other, other highlights, uh, technology team is uh working on making preparations for the summer so that. That uh things are, are ready to go for next school year, um. Food service, again, working on finalizing menus and things for next school year, also working through uh one of the numerous. Uh, audits, I know there were a few more questions that came in today, and so Carly's been doing a great job of answering all those questions, and it seems like. Uh, everything is in place from that standpoint, um. So, that's good. Anything else you wanna do, okay, from, from maintenance standpoint, uh, we had talked at the facilities meeting that. The boiler system had developed some, some leaks, so Dave's been working through up, having those valves replaced and, and things like that. Um. And uh, we talked about the, the plumbing fixtures and, and working through the middle school plumbing projects.
All right, thank you, any questions for Mr. Schmidt on the academic updates? Treasurer's report, Mr. Lewis. That's my favorite time of year, the five-year forecast, so this is uh. This is the May forecast, this is the update, really what, and it's called an update, even though higher revised code, and you're gonna see that in a minute. Um, that uh. Is done in May, so you have the October forecast that I call the driver, really the, the, the base of what we're doing, and then we do a reevaluation and update in May. To make sure we're on ta- on track, uh, make any adjustments that need to be made. And then also that's kind of looking into, you know, wh- what, what does it look like going into uh the new school year? So, um. Start out with, this is a little different, I usually don't do a PowerPoint presentation, but I decided this year that uh. It might be a great way to kind of stay a little more focused on it. Uh, you're probably a little bit hard to read from over there, but uh it, it's, and again, this is just saying that it requires the Board of Education. Uh, to have a five-year forecast, October and May. And uh, and really quite, it's really been changed to November. I'm a little old school and still do October and uh, I haven't, I haven't varied from that, but, but what I'm finding though is that ODE is opening that window. Later and later and later, and it may be November, uh, I may not get a choice, but I'm one of the first people usually done in October. Uh, so uh, our, our, our group. Uh, so anyway, that's uh, it's, it's doing uh November thirtieth now and May thirty-first. Uh, so uh, our our group. Uh, so anyway, that's uh, it's it's doing uh, November thirtieth now and May thirty-first. And it's requiring us to be uh, including the five-year forecast as the O one, which is general fund. Uh, any special cost centers associated uh, with the the general fund's monies, uh, emergency levies, oh-sixteens. Uh, and uh, then uh, also uh, zero-zero-two activities that otherwise would have gone into general fund. Uh, so. The purpose and the objective of a forecast, five-year forecast is to engage the board and the community. And we engage the community through the finance committee, uh, which is made up of our community, so uh, members. Uh, and and it was also put in place back in two thousand and seven when we were in fiscal caution. Uh, and it's highly recommended by the uh, State Auditor's Office that you have a finance committee and uh, and we do, so. Uh, so we do the planning through that, but it also serves the basis for determining a school's ability to sign the certificate of a higher revised code. The four-twelve certificates, and four-twelve certificates are really just saying, hey, I, the treasurer is saying, yes, we have the funding. To uh, take things beyond the current fiscal year. A good example, that would be a long-term lease, uh, a short-term lease, five-year uh, on uh, our copiers, that type of thing. So it allows me through the forecast to be able to say, yes, we can still pay those obligations into the future. Uh, to provide, it also provides a method to how Department Ed and the state to identify schools that might be in potential trouble. Uh, and and financial problems, as they like to say. Uh, before we get into the numbers, so um, it's a financial forecast, is it's kind of like a painting. And you're you're looking at something right now, and we're trying to tell you what's going on now, and then into the future at the same time. Uh, really based on um, that's just a snapshot of today. So the five-year forecast is viewed uh, as a key management tool, and uh, it should uh, be updated periodically. Now, it's obviously updated twice a year. We do have opportunities to update that five-year forecast at any time. It's a lot of heavy lifting when you're already doing it twice, uh, but what I, what I did say to the finance committee, I'll say to the board is. Is that we're, Scott's team and 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 my team have been working on some things that we'll talk about here in a little bit, but the point is, is that. As we continue that work, it doesn't stop right now when you approve this. We're not done. We'll continue the work. And as we do, we will update you and them. I don't know that I'll send it into the state because it's just a compliance checkoff. It's not. We're we're in, we'll be in compliance, but I want you all to know that we continue the work, and here's where we really landed. And specifically, as we get into more detail on the um. Potential revenue that could be increased uh, through the through the reappraisal process. So um. So in the financial uh, forecast, the numbers are, they tell a small part of the story. Uh, for the numbers to be meaningful, you have to review and consider the notes and assumptions. Now, I sent those to you last week, the notes and assumptions. And they go into a deeper dive than I'm doing tonight. Uh, so that is something, if you've got any questions on. And the same thing with finance committee, I did not go into deep dive on the assumptions. That's something you can read. Uh, and and tie into, and if you have any questions, feel free to call, and we'll walk through any of those pieces that uh, that might be helpful for you. But the the assumptions mean a lot. That's how we get to to where we're, you know, the decisions we're making. And and a basis for our conclusions. Uh, the five-year forecast uh, is encourages the management team to examine our future years with projections. Uh, and it helps us identify any challenges that we see arising. And uh, in in our district, the challenge i- is all right at this minute is. Uh, that we want to be in what we would call a balanced with revenues versus expenses. So that we wouldn't be any difference in spending. So that seems to be our challenge right now. We're at the, we have about seventeen million dollars coming in, seventeen point six projected. And Scott and his team and and Rowena with Christine and Scott, Matt, Rowena and myself have been working together. Separately, back together, and uh, and we're still continuing that work even this morning. Um, so. Uh, that this helps the district to be pro- uh, proactive in meeting these challenges. So. The key line items. Now, this uh, is the five-year forecast is divided in two sections. You have revenues, and then you have the expenses. And the district's revenues are made up of two main sources. It's local funding and state funding. And you're gonna see something here in a little bit about how that funding is broken out. Uh, so the expenditures are mainly salary and wages. There's benefits, there's purchase services, there's supplies and materials. So this is the first graph, and it's a, it's just a graph that's showing some cash flow here. So it's your revenues versus expenditures, and it's showing. I- i- it's the indicator of where is the cash going in this current. In this current five-year forecast. And what would that green line mean? That green line would say to me in twenty-twenty-six. Twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, we need new money based on this current forecast, but I'm gonna explain to you why we're not going to. But on this, uh, it would look like we do. And this again is just another way to look at this. You're thirty uh, to sixty-day cash balance, uh, and and it's also uh. Required, there's no less than zero is required by higher revised code. So you know, you just, you can't go into total negative. You have to have some money. So what are the. Percent, eighty-five percent, and and most school districts in salaries and benefits. Just another, another way to look at it, uh, another that's just showing you that our costs are continuing faster. Uh, than if, than inflation and keep an eye on line six point oh-one, and we'll talk about that in a minute. That's really where your cash is. So what you wanna keep an eye on. And the summary, where are we uh, where are we right now? So we're maintaining cuts that were previously done in the past. Uh, to keep our financial health moving forward. Uh, the main action at this time uh, is to keep expenses uh, closely monitored. So they do not exceed resources. That's line six point oh-one. So that's uh, we'll be looking at in a second. Uh, so renewing the levy, we did. Uh, that was a, I had this thing up before that happened, and so. Uh, long-term, uh, we need to continue to operate considerably and keep a close-out of the state budget. We need uh, the new state budget, House Bill one-ten. Not uh, providing substantial new money, we know that. So the futures, uh, future funding is uncertain. Uh, for FY twenty-four through twenty-seven, uh, as the fairer school funding plan continues to be. Back and forth in the state legislature of how they want to fund some things. So it's um, it'd be much more comforting if they were not. Messing with it. Uh, and it doesn't seem to be something they like to do to leave things alone. So other proposals like the college credit plus, excess cost and tuition are expected to um. To uh, increase as a cause, as 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 times going forward. So we'll be keeping an eye on that and making adjustments. And we have a, as you all know, a very robust college credit plus program. We just need to keep an eye on what those costs are doing and. Stay in, you know, in line with that. So it's thank you for listening, and any questions and answers, I I can quick Q and A right now, but I'm also gonna be going into more detail if you'd like to wait. On that, if you have any questions so far.
I do have a couple, Brad.
Yes.
First, we were talking about the purposes of our of our five-year forecast.
Yes.
And uh, one of them was, if I'm not mistaken, is our five-year forecast also serves as our budget.
That's correct.
Now, I don't know if that's this one, or if it's the one we did in the fall, or 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 if this is an amendment to the budget. I don't know.
It should be more of an amendment to the budget.
Okay, so, but 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 we are, we are messing with our budget. So.
Correct.
And that's not true of most districts, I don't think.
That's correct.
Um, and then just on the Drolf, and you, I thought your comments on Drolf were 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 were. Uh, interesting that we're right back to where where we were, but. Uh, my recollection of when Drolf was decided was at the time. The state wasn't satisfied with the level of state funding at that time, and they still wanted to take money from schools then, didn't they?
Correct.
They wanted it to go down, and Drolf kind of put a stop to that, so.
Yes.
Um, just because we're back to where. Drolf is, I don't think that, I don't, I don't think the state's done yet either. Um.
No.
I also don't think the 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 lawsuit that that the same people that filed Drolf. Uh, have going now uh, for the charters. I don't take much stock in it. I could end up wrong, but I I I don't see that. I don't see that working this time. But we'll see. Uh, finally, and a guarantee, you were talking about open enrollment, the impact that that that. When we lose, when 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 kids come in the door, it doesn't necessarily mean we get more money. What does that mean that when kids walk out our door? We don't lose money either?
That'd be correct. We wouldn't lose as much. Now, we're gonna get money either and lose money. It's just not. You can't take the full face value of that dollar, and you you have to run it through the formula because it it, there isn't. It's not a dollar-for-dollar like we had before, where we could see. In fact, it was sixty-eight hundred dollars coming in, sixty-eight hundred going out. It doesn't quite work like that now. Because we're not, they're not pulling any money out of ours. When somebody leaves, they're pulling it out of the state foundation.
There was a, there was. See if I explained this correctly. There was, there was basically a double transfer of money for students that were open enrolled somewhere else. So we would get their money because we were the school of residents, but then we would transfer their money to the school that they were attending. And same thing would happen. Kids that were open enrolled here, their homeschool would get their money and then transfer it here. They've taken that transfer piece out. Wherever you're enrolled is where you. Receive your dollars now.
Do you have an estimate for what that difference is?
No. No, not right now.
Okay. I'll follow up then, I'll, yeah, offline, but I'm really curious. I wa- I I really wanna dig a little deeper into that. We don't need to burden the meeting with it. That's all I got.
I just have one thing I wanna add since we're talking about the renewal of the levy. Is to thank all the voters who voted for passing it. This way we can maintain status quo as what we are doing right now for the rest of this school year and starting next school year.
Thank you. All right. I'm moving to the actual forecast that you're really approving. Not approving my PowerPoint, and you are accepting the assumptions, and you are approving this. So. We were able to adjust this forecast to include the passing of the levy, so that's in the forecast. What is not in this forecast, and I think that's the most important piece of is what is not. Is that um, Doug Hart and I went uh, this last fall and met with Mike Smith's. Team, Mike Smith and his team, uh, Brad Kotril, uh, great, great people, great team. And they shared with us early on that they believed in the new reappraisal, that we would land at about twenty-five percent increase. And they had just completed our school district, so they brought fresh off the press, I always call it, and they shared that with us. And uh, and we brought that back to you all in finance. Uh, we got, uh, we got updated in about March, mid-March, again, confirming the twenty-five percent. Uh, potential. And so what what I'm, I wanna clarify before we get into what you're gonna see on this forecast with uh, some deficit spending. Is that we are anticipating, because they collect in arrears, and we'll start collecting, you know, start uh, in in January of twenty. Twenty-four, uh, we will start receiving that that increase. We are at what's called the twenty mil floor. And so when there is a uh, and we're under the twenty mil floor, so they raise you up to the twenty mil floor, the state does. When we have new monies come in, we receive that revenue. So we're anticipating uh, right now that we receive about eight hundred thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-four. And then we, a- and using that along with um. Uh. Which is where we kind of got to this number we were looking at, and and it still left us about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we needed to work on and reductions. Uh, to get us to that zero mark. So we have monies coming in on the revenue side. And we've been just as transparent as possible, working with Scott and Christine. Matt, Matt and Christine have been doing a lot of heavy lifting. I want this board to know that Matt and Christine have done a lot of heavy lifting with 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 the. Uh, Scott and myself and Rowena joining in after they've done the deep dive, and then we come in with them uh, and and spent. Time on deep dive, and then we've spent time together. And we've been working uh, towards making sure that this number, which I'm gonna get to in a minute, uh, gets to zero. And so uh, so I would call it a scenario that we're working on, but you all have to still. Only work with what the reality is, because uh, State Auditor's Office highly recommends, and we follow, and I've always followed here. Everywhere is that unless the money is certified, we don't, we don't plan it. Uh, and and that, that was another thing in the CPIM credits, that CPIM closes that I took uh, when I was a couple weeks back. They were adamant about that. You don't put in money until it's been certified. And I think it's just sound advice, because anything can happen. The state can change these recommendations. So when the state goes to certify and Mike's team puts in twenty-five percent, they could come back and say, no, we think it's fifteen. Or they could come back and say, no, we think you're right, and it could be thirty. Now, I will tell you, typically, Mike's team's spot on. So I really believe that, and and Scott, myself believe, and I do believe Doug and I believe, that the twenty-five percent's a reasonable number. Um, so when I say that. We didn't want to come to both of our team, our teams pulled together, didn't want to come and and try to cut a million too. We knew that we were about at that six hundred and fifty mark, and we didn't want to ask for more than what we really needed. We thought we were gonna really need. So, wanna share that before we go down through this. Uh, so that, so you seen where the revenues, where we think the revenues are gonna be coming in. Uh, when you heard us talking about, and I said seventeen million, Scott'll say seventeen million, that's in our scenario, because right now you're seeing. You know, fifteen, almost sixteen million, not seventeen. So we're 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 anticipating already as we're working together. On the new monies. So I've said all that to tee up, to tee up line six oh-one oh, because that's where the rubber meets the road. So what you'll see here is uh, that we're projecting uh, a a a. Deficit spending this year, which we all knew. We had planned it, we talked about it. We knew that we were in that window that uh, that was not the sweet spot. Uh, and and so we we had the, we had this plan. What we. What we want to be careful of though is, is that that plan doesn't continue doing that, because then you're out of money in in one year. So if you're looking at this, at this. Scenario, not scenario, this five-year forecast. You have um, right now, you you would, I would be recommending, Scott would be recommending going on uh, for a levy in twenty-twenty-five. If you didn't know anything else, just this by itself, we'd say, it's time for new money. And. What we've done is is gone ahead and said, okay, we don't, we don't really need to cut one point one million. We need to cut six hundred and fifty thousand. Reduce six fifty, and that's the, that's the work we've been doing. Uh, we'll get, we'll get the half of that with new revenue. With the, with the reduction of the other one point one there. Half of that'll be with new revenue, and half of that'll be with reductions. That's the easiest way to think about it. So. One of the, one of the keys right here too is, is that when we're going through this process. To make sure we didn't go into precaution, which is a heck of a lot of work for my office, for really no reason when you believe you're gonna have any revenues. The big key was, could we make it from this year, twenty-four and twenty-five, and still be in the black? And we're in the black by two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, uh, two hundred and nineteen thousand, basically. And that's because it takes into consideration that you're still holding out the sixty-day reserve. So just so you know that you really have the two hundred and eighteen plus your reserve. It's not like you're completely out of money yet. But that would be your trigger to go for new money. And if we didn't have reappraisal coming. You might be talking about new money tonight, and but we're not, not at all. Not even bringing it up. We were going to have a much better picture where we stand when the October forecast comes out. Because we will have half a year's collection of uh, of the uh, reappraisal, and the following year's full collection. At twenty-five percent, that's uh, right now, one point eight million, and that could be adjusted based on new home, housing coming in and things that. Weren't here while I was doing those calculations, that may be here when that happens, or maybe a new business. I don't know. We'll, we'll find it. But I think October's gonna be our real picture, and there's nothing for this board to do on new money at this moment. I think we're, we're, we're in a good place. We do need to be sure that we get that number, that six fifty down to zero. One caveat I'm gonna throw out at that though, and I've told this to the finance committee, I've told this to, and Scott and I have talked about it. And Jama knows this, uh, and I do believe we talked about it in general meeting. We do have an insurance situation that's happening right now, and we are not. We do have an insurance situation that's happening right now and we are not including that. In additional reduction, whatever hits us, that may be some deficit spending. I'd like us to be at the zero and if the insurance knocks us back into deficit, so be it. Um, there's just, that's just a guess at this moment. And the reason I say that is we have fifteen percent built in. And we may hit twenty. I don't know. I don't know yet. It's, uh, we've had some, it's a, it's a rough renewal. I'll just tell you that. Very rough renewal. So that's one that we're not, we're, we put fifteen percent in. That's a pretty strong one. We've been averaging about three. So. You know, I, I could put twenty, twenty five percent in and then that just. It's a lot more work than I think needs to be done right now. And I think adjustments can be made going into October forecast. So. I, I think that's where we're gonna know where we land. Uh, just as a side note, we are collecting a little bit better on the uh permanent improvement funds than what we've been. Than what we anticipated. And we believe that's because of new housing coming in that brought income. Um, so that's, that's giving us a little bit of, little bit of comfort right now. Uh, us being Matt and me, I'll be honest with you guys, and I told this to finance committee. I don't think Matt or Wayne and I slept from December until the bond, until the levy passed. And uh, big thanks for those folks who did the work to, to get that through and it was, and it was a strong. Showing of support. That's all I have for tonight. Uh, you may have questions now, but I'm making a commitment to you guys that, that Scott's team and my team are working to get to zero. Not including any of the insurance at this point. When it, when we know that real thing, we can kind of get our heads back together and see if there's some work needs to be done. Uh, and um, but we'll deal with that separately. I just think we've. We've done a lot of lifting. I want to put a big shout out to, to Matt's deep dive, Christine's willingness to dive in with him. Uh, and uh. There's just a lot of pieces to this that have been um very um. Uh, collaborative. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of give and take on both sides of, of the conversations. So. That's mine.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Do we have any questions about five year forecast?
I do have several. Um. First, you, you, you mentioned that meeting that we had with uh, with Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Uh, and. That, you know, he, he did, he did indicate that twenty five percent was what we could expect and. I'm, I'm hearing that he, in March, he, he reinforced that or somebody from his team did.
Yes.
And I agree, that seems reasonable. Um, except. He also indicated that property values are up. I mean, certainly all over central Ohio, and I think perhaps it may be a statewide thing to some extent. And it, and if it is, I, I can, I can see a taxpayer outcry. About that happening and, and a push to, I mean, they, they don't know about House Bill nine twenty that, that this. Twenty mil floor seems to be a, an end run around. Uh, but I know all the legislators know about it. And I can see, I can see. A grassroots movement similar to what brought nine twenty about way back when. And I can see the legislature. And the governor, given their lack of love for public schools. Uh. Coming up with some kind of a limit as to how much you could. Hit taxpayers with in a given year. So instead, so maybe it'd be. Limited to CPI, maybe it'd be limited to five percent, ten percent, some, some amount per year. So. Uh, that, that, that's, that's my concern and, and why, why I certainly applaud. Not including it in a forecast. Uh, the way I understand forecasts is it's supposed to, we're supposed. It is a projection of sorts, but we're looking at what we consider to be our most likely scenario. And so, um. And, and from an accounting conservative conservatism position, you would, you would never forecast. Money that isn't certified. You just, it's just so, so yeah, I mean, you're, 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 you're right on the mark there. Um. We talked about. How we planned for a, a deficit last fall. Um, I, I think part of the reason that we did that was we had previously received. ESSER funding in, in prior years. And we've kind of banked that and we have a time limit over which we're allowed to, over which I think we must spend that. And I think that's part of what's cushioning. Cushioning us now that we can, you know, we, we expected we were gonna have a deficit because we were gonna be spending that money that we'd already received. But year to year. It's in the bank. Well, now, oh my gosh, it's deficit. Am I right? That, that there's an element of that?
There may be a little bit of that, but um. It wouldn't be this whole amount that, that we're showing here because I, we, we really, whether it came to ESSER funds. Did additional. So we, we added additional staff to, to help catch up um the student achievement. Gap or close to choosing student cannot catch up, but close to student keep it G M gap. And then we bought uh textbooks and things with it. For the future too. So um. We didn't embed it like a lot of districts did. So we're not, we're not feeling that per se. Uh, what we are feeling Doug and I, and I didn't go into it a lot of depth is that. In the prior year in transportation, we got overpaid by clerical error and that Matt and uh Matt. Caught and we self-reported. And so they took it all back this year. So, so you're seeing a one million, the one million dollars is the five hundred thousand we got. Too much last year. Funding we receiving already too much this year and they took it all back at one time. So that's a million of that. So technically. We really were only at the, we're only looking at the three hundred thousand being over, which was what we projected. We didn't project one million. Uh, and that was a, it was an accounting error uh that came, you know, that ultimately I'm responsible for at the end of the day. Um, so we caught it self-reported. Passed audit because we self-reported, uh, but it did change our cash. Flow, uh, overpaid last year and you can see that in the uh, and when we balance it out, that's, it does balance out the two years.
But so that's just a one time thing.
One time thing.
So, so why is that we find ourselves in a deficit that we're having to go through all this?
Going forward?
Yeah.
I'll be honest with you guys. I'm struggling with that because what's happened in the past and I, I believe a big piece of this is inflation. I believe that. And I say this. I don't want to get, uh, I don't want pitchforks and coming in, but, but every indicator that I ever learned in, in my MBA courses and my finance courses. We're in a recession now. I can wait and call it a super recession later if they want to, but we're really in a recession. And when you go, and I've told the finance committee this. If you go to McDonald's and your dollar uh Coke is now a dollar twenty nine, and if you go to Dollar General. And your dollar item is now a dollar twenty five, we're somewhere between twenty five and thirty percent true. Cost. And when you add that thirty percent of cost of doing business in, that's what's eating up our money. Because we're not built for that. Uh, we're, we're not, we don't make widgets. We're not built. We can't change our cost or our pricing. So our revenue we're so reliant on uh is getting eaten up very quickly. And uh, and then, you know, it's things out of our control. One of the things that, you know, we took a deep dive in. Uh, was transportation and I'm not gonna go into great detail, but one of the things we thought we could do is save money on um. Try and one, a single route uh and I was all gung ho for it because we could save a hundred thousand dollars in fuel. When we do end the money, the numbers, it didn't work out that way. Our funding from the state would be reduced. Larger than our savings and it, and, and we'd be. Challenging our students to, in the mornings to get to, to school and some different things that were gonna be. Rougher that Scott wasn't crazy about. So, you know, from a financial point, that was a great idea from. Then the reality that it wasn't good either way, wasn't good financially or uh what we felt was best. So. We've kind of unturned, we've kind of turned the stones on all those things, everything that we've had, we've taken a second look at and, and. Sometimes talked ourselves in and right back out again, but we have proof as to why something won't work. I'd be able to tell somebody to say, well, how about single routing? Tried that. It's not a savings. So. Uh, I may have gone too far to answer that question, but we did do a deep dive into that.
I know diesel fuel, for example, is up a lot, but not over last year.
Not over last year, correct. So, so yeah, so it's not like you got, we got a thirty percent bump last year and another thirty percent this year. That's not happening. It, it's more like that thirty percent bump is just really eating in. And the other thing that happens too is that you still have. You know, you still have your step increases and you have things that continue to, you know, to continue to rise and the cost of doing goods continues to rise. So. You know, it's little things like that add up because um. Right now we're trying to get the boiler system fixed and one, one valve is seventy, seventy five hundred dollars. We have to have two. Plus another valve we just found that needs to be replaced. So we may have, you know, and, and Dave said those, the last time that they got those valves, it was like, you know. Twenty eight hundred dollars. So I mean, it's just crazy, the cost difference when we go to buy things. So.
Of course, things like that, those would be permanent improvements that we could find out in permanent improvement levy, but we spent a lot of money.
Well.
No, it's.
It's coming out of permanent. It's still coming out of improvement. I've got some, there's some cash for it, but not, not a lot, but we've got some for that. But I, I would tell you though that it's um.
Well, we're only, so, so that, that, that item isn't really germane to the five year forecast.
No, 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 I was just bringing it up for cost. You asked, I was just talking about costs or just. Crazy. What, what's happened in the past for us? And I think it's important and I, I've struggled with this this year and trying to figure out what exactly is happening different this year. Typically when we have the renewal. We would budget at what we're seeing here, bring things down to basically the zero uh revenue versus expenses at zero. Um, and then when we got the reappraisal, we would get around, we'd average around three hundred, two hundred eighty thousand, three hundred. Right in that range. And that would be our cushion. That would be okay. If Scott and his team walked in and said, you know what? We forgot to buy this. Really would like to do it. We'd like to add Fontis and Pannella. Remember that year that was, you know, it was so successful. We not, we want to expand it. The answer was yes, because we had this additional revenue that was not budgeted for. I mean, we, we, we had a cushion. This year it's like, it's all gone. But the eight hundred thousand dollar increase and then some on projections. I always like to say it's a projection. We didn't have to spend it. So when we're saying we're reducing things, what we're saying is we're reducing the, the, the cost of living or the, you know, the uh. Yeah, cost of living trend. We're saying now we're stopping at this. So we, for example, we froze at uh, that, that supply expenditures this year. Looked like we're heading to a million one and we froze it at nine hundred and fifty thousand. We thought, actually, we, we got a whole hundred thousand back down out of that. So um purchase service, same thing. We said, no, we're not, we're gonna. We're just not gonna have some things, but we're freezing that. Again, that was a savings against projections, which is all this is. This isn't, we were buying it and we then decided, no, this is. We never had it to begin with and we're trimming back and we're just saying, okay, what, we're just not gonna do, you know. We'll do something. So it's been a little more creative this year. I think this is the toughest year. Of this new reappraisal. I really think, that's why I'm saying, I really believe the October one, the October is gonna tell us the true story. This one's the rough transition out of. Um. Trying not to deficit spend and because that's gonna carry you. If we don't deficit spend this year, we don't deficit spend next year, which I believe can happen. That's gonna carry us for at least four more years before we're talking new money, maybe five. Just based on these next two years. Because as Scott said today in one of the meetings with the teachers. You can't spend it twice. Once it's gone, it's gone. You know, it's, so we're being very cautious of that as we're having these conversations.
Well, it's my understanding that it's a little bit of a cart before the horse problem too. In that we don't know what our revenues are going to be. But the state is requiring us to pile and approve this five year forecast.
Correct.
It's very difficult to put that. Because we can't commit those uncertified funds to the forecast. It, it doesn't look as positive as, as it probably is.
Correct. It doesn't.
Right.
And that's why this is the toughest one. Uh, this, this one is a, um. I had a board member ask me, it was, so the finance committee sort of took a leap of faith that you're all are gonna get, that it's really what the scenario is. And I said, yes, yes, based on the fact that Scott's team and my team are working together. The fact that we believe that the twenty five percent's legit. And we went and met with them and, and I walked away with, okay, wow. I'm a taxpayer too. So I did say wow on both sides. I wow, I'm as a treasurer, always happy to get new revenues. Um, as taxpayer, not, not so much liking to give it to them, but you know, it is the, the deal. And at the end of the day, no matter what's going on in this county, it's happening countywide. And we're still the lowest tax district in Licking County. Even with reappraisal, because everybody's getting reappraisal. So we're still the lowest taxed district, period, in Licking County. So it's, it's, we're all kind of in that thing together. I don't know how else to say it. Everyone, everyone's gonna feel that. Not just, it isn't like if you go up to Johnstown, they're not feeling it. It's not like if you go over to Newark, they're not feeling it or Lakewood's not feeling it. They're all feeling it. They're all gonna have the same exact. I can't say they're all gonna land on the same number we did because that's all calculated a little differently. They might have thirty percent. Or twenty percent in some places. They didn't just take twenty five percent across the board for all of us. It didn't work like that. I don't believe it'll work like that.
Well, they, they were doing that. District by district, area by area.
Correct.
So it could be that there'll be some variance between what the increase is in one area versus the increase in another area. Right. He did say everybody's up substantially.
Yes.
But I mean, and, and we, we're talking about twenty five percent in here. But I mean, the number that, that. Mr. Smith and his associates indicated that we're gonna see the, the values go up is thirty five percent. Um, and that's a number that I've heard one of the trustees be into about. Um, and, and try to scare people to think that their tax bills are gonna go up thirty five percent. The difference is that the twenty five percent is what Mr. Smith estimates. He's going to be told to adjust in order to meet the twenty mil floor. So the difference between twenty five percent and thirty five percent is your House Bill nine twenty protection. Where, where there's. You can't make more money off of levy than what it, than, than, than what it produced when it went on. With this twenty mil floor exception. So that's, that's, that's what's gonna happen. That's why it's twenty five, not thirty five that we're gonna see. Um, and not the thirty five that they're, that the fear mongers are out there.
Yeah, I think the thirty five is a bit. Yes.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
So that, but, but I mean, we, we had that discussion within that. Uh, just, just not to take this forever, but. You mentioned the finance committee taking a leap of faith. I mean, did they? Did they have much to say about the deficit spending position? Cause I would expect that they would.
Yeah, there was a lot. There was, there was quite a bit of talk about, about deficit spending. Um.
They're not fans of it yet.
No.
Okay.
No, they, they never have it. We have, since the day I walked in, um, March of twenty twelve. We have. Always budgeted revenues to expenses and taken advantage of any reapapaisals. Uh, and as I said, this is, this is what, this is a head scratching year of how we're getting this reappraisal and still struggling. To, you know, having to work hard. To get to that zero base. Uh, I mean, we are, I mean, it's some heavy lifting. It's, 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 their meetings can get a little emotional. About things that you don't want to give up and the things that we fought hard for and different things, but uh, but it's, it's um. I like to think of it as just no different than you do in your house. What are you gonna buy this year? What are you not gonna buy this year? What can you afford? Can you afford that third vacation or just the two? Or none, uh, that, that you're gonna buy that second car? Is it gonna be new or is it gonna be a used one? Uh, can we get another year out of that truck? Or the lawnmower? I mean, that's exactly what we're having. We're having those conversations. Uh. And what, what, what we're using is um. We are using what the other states' best practices are and the other state best practice is attrition. And that counts. So if somebody's leaving, and a great example of that is we had a, we had a custodian leave at the elementary school. Uh, I believe about a month ago and we did not replace that individual and we're not planning to replace that individual. Um. And then we had somebody on leave who's coming back, which is a, a good thing. Uh, but we didn't budget for that person to come back. Uh, so now we're, you know, every time. It's one step forward, two steps back kind of thing as we're going through this process. And, and then one of the other things that you try to take advantage of is. If some folks are leaving, that might be at a step ten, you make a real commitment to try to bring in a step zero to three. You know, because there's a significant savings there. And that's another piece uh that we. Tool that we use and are using. Um, and then one of the other things that we're really working hard on this year, not that we don't every year, but we're looking at every place we can. There's some folks that uh. We don't want, we, we'd like to not absorb back into general fund. And so we're looking at other uh grants and ways to pay that. And so if you're gonna do that, what would, how's that gonna fit and what's gonna happen and how much of that can you do? And we're even looking at. What percentage of that salary can we get into that? So we're really down to the wire because we've got, as I shared with you last week. We're down under the hundred thousand dollar range. We had a meeting this morning, came out over the hundred thousand dollar range. Matt worked some magic on some stuff. We're back under the hundred thirty and that's how these days are going. It's like we're, we're give and take and then. Matt worked some magic on some stuff from back under the hundred thirty, and that's how these days are going. It's like we're, we're give and take, and then something new comes up. Uh, 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 another staff member from uh one of the schools, uh, we thought for sure wasn't coming back, all indicators. And now today we found out they are. And that was one of the ads back in. And then we went, okay, now what's that look like? And then we had somebody turn in a resignation this morning that was like, oh, well, now we have so it's, it's just a juggling act right now. And I, I have confidence we're going to get to the zero mark. And I think we have confidence too that that we're being very conservative on the revenue side. Being very conservative on the revenue side. I have confidence that, well, you could say it's not conservative because of the twenty-five percent, but I really believe that we went, you know, for example, if it's one point eight million dollars that we believe the twenty-five percent could bring in under full collection as of right now, and we budgeted eight hundred, well, that's not half. Right? So in theory, I, I mean, there's a hundred thousand there. Scott's well aware, Christine, we keep, we're, we're just very transparent about what we're doing, and we have things up on the board and we take things off the board and put things on the board and, and we work through it. But the the biggest concern that, that I have, and, and we've made a commitment for next year to not let it go this long, is I'd really like to have that work done by April fifteen so that we could have you, you wouldn't have to take a leap of faith that we're working that hard. I mean, you're taking our word for it that we're doing it, and we are. Um, but I mean, that's the big leap of faith is that are we going to get to zero? And I, I really believe we will. And if I didn't, believe that this would be the time I'd be saying, we're not going to make it. So.
Well, it sounds like, it sounds like you're committed to the, to get into zero. It's not a surprise. Which, but it sounds like you're committed to getting to zero.
It's been, it's been a very collegial effort and, and it is it's a lot of detailed work, um, but we, all, all parties are in tune and an agreement in the work.
So, so.
I think, I think Mr. Wiggins, the comment you made a little bit ago, uh, uh, about timing. Um, in, in, in an accounting, an accounting term for that would be cutoff. And so in order to, in order to make these presentations and have a document that you can send in, you've got to have a cutoff. And so when you talk about it being a snapshot, I mean, the snapshot is wherever that cutoff is.
It's, and that's today.
And, and so you're saying, well, no, it's actually two weeks, it's two weeks ago, or maybe
Correct.
whenever, whenever you, whatever, I mean, because you, you, you didn't just do this yesterday.
No.
Um, and so uh, it's fluid, and you're saying that right now we're under a hundred thousand dollars.
Correct, at this moment. And I want to say this, we do have another cutoff, and that is May thirty. We're, we're going to be done with whatever, whatever we've landed on by May thirty, because we have to then get everything loaded into the system for a real budget. So there's a second, you know, it's, it's the reality budget that we work in. And so we have to have our work done the next week. Um, that we're in agreement that we're at zero, and we'll send that out to you all that, and finance, that we made it. Uh, and then we'll still have the outlier of insurance. Um, just, I just, that we may have to take another whack at, or hope that the revenues come in and save the day on that. So, you know, I, I think, I think we're in a good spot. I think it's just really important to stay as close to the zero this time. What I did share with Scott is it's now trade me time. If you now, if you come in the door when I was able to say yes, because there was a cushion, uh, if you will, uh, or you know, that three hundred thousand dollars, um, that we won't have that. So now it's okay, you say you want this. Well, what are we not going to do then? So now it's trade me time, which we've never had to do since we've been here. And that's a different mentality.
Maybe, maybe at the beginning.
With the, at the beginning, but yeah. At the beginning, there's a lot of, a lot of trades, yes.
There's a reason you had that no button.
Yeah, the no button was very, very helpful back in those days. So yeah, so it's, it'll be trade time. I won't be able to say yes for anything, because we'll already be at zero.
Well, thank you for your patience with my questions.
Anytime, anytime.
Thank you for the board for tolerating the questions.
And with that, do we have any more questions for Mr. Lewis on the five-year forecast?
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Schmidt.
All right, my updates, uh, I'm going to share one thing that's in your folder. You have the actual enrollment numbers from this year, uh, which sort of track what's happening. Uh, and you'll, you'll notice we started the year off with a thousand, two hundred and eight students total and ended the year with twelve, twenty-one. Um, middle school and high school started with about the same number and ended the same number. Doesn't exactly mean that we didn't have move-ins and move-outs, but um preschool, again, same starting and ending, but at the elementary level, we went, starting the year at four hundred and eighty-six students and ending the year with five hundred and six. So an addition of twenty students uh at the elementary level, and that does fall into um typical stats as far as when a district is starting to see growth, uh, families, elementary families are typically more likely to move than middle school and high school families. Um, so we provided this, this uh monthly uh update. Um, to the board this year so we could see how things, you know, continue to watch things closely. You will notice that the four eighty-six was at the, the first week of school when we have to clean up numbers. By the time we knew who was moving out and who'd moved in, by the first week of September, we were four ninety-six. So we saw an increase of ten students from September to May, but in that first, in that first week, we had a, a significant change there. So we'll continue to watch that. We will also have uh updates from uh cooperative strategies on their ten-year enrollment projection status from that standpoint. Um, the next piece, just kind of finishing wrapping up the, the staffing and budgeting uh adjustments and uh we already highlighted some of this, but yes, we, we're all in agreement, working through that process and understand our goal of getting to the zero piece. Um, but every day there, there are adjustments that happen with additional staff that are resigning, uh, moving away and, and whatnot. So all of that affects um who's certified to be able to do what and where we can move people. Also looking at a, a lot of the numbers that are driven by the special ed uh numbers. So, but right now, some of the, the big things that we are looking at, we'd already previously announced that uh Renee Lynn was retiring. She had helped us for the first few years to get the preschool up and running. Uh, so we're not replacing that administrative position. Uh, the board is also aware that Michelle McJesse, our special ed director, uh, is, is moving on to another opportunity. And so in trying to right-size, um, we're going to, we're going to make a shift and uh Dr. Carrickson is going to be taking on those special ed uh responsibilities. Uh, we still need to, to meet, to figure out all the other little details. Um, but I think if you remember to, to last two months ago, I was really passionate about the school improvement work that we're doing. And so while this is the right move from a budget's standpoint, there are consequences to every, every decision. Um, and so it, it doesn't, I, I don't want it to downplay the importance of the, the school improvement work we're doing, and we'll have conversations around how do we move that forward? But when you, when you don't have someone solely dedicated to that work, it, it just makes it, you know, a, a little more challenging. And so um, I am uh very appreciative of, of Dr. Carrickson's work these past two years and and appreciative of, of the willingness to switch and, and help us out as a district. Uh, other, other big uh cuts as we're looking at things, we're looking at uh intervention specialists and, and our ability to make reductions there. Uh, at specifically at middle school and high school. Um, our student support services, we brought in uh social workers after COVID. Um, and uh we'll be kind of reducing the middle school, high school, social worker position, which means uh Don Miller, who was in the middle school guidance position, will move back to the middle school guidance position, uh, which, which bumps out or reduces one teacher from that standpoint. Um, and, and we've made that aware um, from the, from the, technically the middle school guidance counselor position, uh, which is where Mrs. Miller was previously. Uh, so we'll be down one, one mental health guidance counselor position. Um, but we're also uh looking at uh combining some, some potential bus routes, which I know when Mr. Lewis and I talked about, one thing we wanted you to know is that that means while our goal is to have a bus route under sixty minutes, we may be able to combine two bus routes, but that means we may be running at sixty-three minutes or sixty-five minutes. But in looking at the budget, um, we were able to do that several times this year when we were short drivers and didn't throw the whole cycle off. So we're going to be digging into some of that. So just like we don't have a final number, I don't have a final reduction list for you, but that gives you an idea of, of what we're looking at. And clearly, um, the, the two big administrative shifts there uh were, were highlighting. Um, and as Mr. Lewis talked about, our, our hiring goal is step zero. Um, you know, step zero, one, two, if we can keep that in that uh low experience level helps with the overall budget. Um, and, and we also talked about this morning, that is, that is our goal, but until we go through the hiring process, we don't know what 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 candidates we will have. Um, last year was unique in the fact that we had some people moving in from out of state, uh, which ended up being larger dollar figures, but we're, we're working at, at keeping that at that zero, one, two, three piece. So that just sort of wraps up and or re- reiterates what we've been talking about from a budget standpoint.
Oh, we've made a commitment in our office to be tracking that. We'll have the salary, uh, the, the people moving in.
We will, we will be tracking it as well. Um, and so then I know uh Mr. Schrock already shared this, Mr. Lewis has, others have come in, but just want to thank the community for their support of the operating levy. Um, uh, that support is much appreciated. I also wanted to share a shout out to um our levy committee, and I've included uh spouses on this list because uh the people that spent hours on there, it affects the whole family. So um Lauren and Dustin Osball, who chaired the, the um levy committee this year, uh Jemma and Greg Bemelin, Kate and Rick Krieger, uh Kate and Brian Isler, uh Ellie and Andy Callis, uh Rachel and Scott Smith, uh Brittany and Anthony Ellis. Um, shout out to my wife who also helped, which I appreciated. Um, then, but this also is a great effort in the fact that uh the NYA board uh really worked to help communicate and share things, the athletic boosters uh and the PTO. So you know, we had, we had great engagement at the elementary, middle school and high school, uh, and much appreciated. So thank you to the levy committee uh for all their, their work.
And the teachers.
Yeah, the teachers who helped with, with uh phone calls and um and, and also providing a quality education that our community, you know, the, the parents can get behind and support. So uh, you know, if, if things aren't going well in the schoolhouse, that shows up at the, at the uh election, shows up at the voting booth. Um, so yeah, absolutely. Kudos, kudos to the teachers, not only for helping get the word out, but also just providing, providing a quality education that our families are, are proud of. And that's all I have for superintendent reports.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Do we have any questions for Mr. Schmidt? Hearing none, we will move on to the uh approval of our consent agenda.
Mr. President, just
Yes.
And I didn't notice this at the time of the adoption agenda, I would have, I would have noted it.
Okay.
We seem to have skipped over board discussion items in our, on our agenda tonight. Um, I don't have any to bring forward. I just want to, I, I, since I, since I spotted it.
Sorry, did I miss that?
It's, it's not there. So. I had noticed that earlier on, you brought it up, but.
Means we can't, yeah, we can't discuss anything. It's not on the paper.
Well, gee, that's a relief because I didn't have anything to bring forward, so.
Good catch. I didn't even notice it missing. I'm like, man, this meeting's going quick. Hmm? So no board discussion?
No board discussion.
Well, I guess the only board discussion was the lack of the item.
Yeah, our board discussion was lack of the item. Um, wow. Now it got me all messed up. All right. So prior to moving on to the uh consent agenda, I, I would like to take the opportunity to open the floor to board discussion items, should there be any, other than the fact that the board discussion items is not on the agenda. Um, the only thing I, I wanted to, to bring up is, is a couple of board items. Uh, the the board received some uh correspondence from a parent um a couple of times in reference to the excellence of our music programs. And I just want to echo that sentiment and um say that, you know, we've truly seen some, some remarkable stuff coming out of that department. And um it, it's truly incredible. Um, I think I could, I, I mentioned in the last meeting, having attended the the, the High School Musical was just an outstanding performance. I also had the opportunity um at the elementary uh to attend the music program there with the, the uh drums and, and music. And we've just really really done some really nice stuff there. So I just wanted to not only um, you know, a, address that, that correspondence, which I think is, is absolutely, absolutely uh, uh true in every sense of the word, but also uh echo my own sentiments about the excellence that's coming out of our, our, our music program. Um, Mr. and Mrs. Glenn, Mr. Healy, who just have, have really done some outstanding work. Um, and then if you haven't heard it enough in this meeting, I do want to echo what Mr. Schmidt said about the, the gratitude for the passing of the emergency levy. Um, we really depend on this, as you see from our five-year forecast, we count every dollar. Um, and um we, we, we couldn't be in the circumstance and be able to deliver the great programs that we do uh without that community support. So those are the only two things that I had. Okay, so moving on to the printed agenda, number uh eight here. The approval of the consent agenda items. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Hart.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bemelin. Do we have any additional discussion about the consent agenda?
I do.
Go ahead.
Um, I'd like seeing, it was great seeing all of the um senior graduates um listed. But I was wondering, would this need to stay on for our minutes? The names, because I didn't know if there's a privacy, student privacy conflict? If it was uh on our minutes.
I'll check that answer.
It, it already went out to the public, so.
The, they.
Or did the draft agenda not have that?
The draft agenda did not have names listed.
So that was just one thing. It's nice to see it, but I didn't know if it should. Yeah.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Always got to watch out for that furpa bug. Any other uh discussion items on the uh consent agenda? Hearing none, Mr. Lewis, can you please call a roll?
Yes, sir. Mrs. Bemelin?
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger?
Yeah.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Schrock?
Yes.
Mr. Wiggins?
Yes.
She passes. We did not have any items removed from the consent agenda. So we are on to our separate consideration items.
Ten point one.
Do we have a spot for that?
You didn't have a spot for that one? I have a spot for that one here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Nine, nine point one. Oh, okay.
Yes, we have.
Say, at this point, I'm suspect of everything. All right.
I went to the next page and I made my notes right here on the, the. Oh, well.
Yeah, well, fortunately, we don't have anything removed, so we're going to skip.
That's actually the progress, though.
Yeah, so ten point one is uh, um, for Lifewise Academy, Mr. Schmidt.
Yes, so I've provided uh board updates on this, but we do have a current policy in place um that allows for release time for religious, religious instruction. That uh policy says that students will re- release from non-core instruction uh time. Uh, Lifewise Academy has had some conversations with us at the district office, as well as following up uh with Mrs. Beaver and Mrs. Breckville um in order to offer an opportunity for students to leave campus during their uh related arts specials time. Um, and uh in order for Lifewise to work at raising funds, to hire a director and a teacher and and provide busing and meet all the requirements of the, the state statute, um, they would just like an acknowledgement that that um if they were able to, to put that funding and everything together, um, that we're aware of their request and, and would work with them. I would say uh they've been a great, uh, great partner in um. I would say, uh, they've been a great, uh, great partner in, um, providing different options and helping us. You know, understands, uh, their flexibility, um, and so we have an initial. A goal of looking at third, fourth and fifth grade, um, to, to start this program. Um, that, that Lifewise would like to offer our families, they will have to opt in, they'll be fully aware of, of what the, what they would be missing. Um, while they live in that standpoint. Um, so this is just, uh. The board's acknowledgement that, um, af- if, if they. So if you so support this night, I will follow up with Lifewise, the letter listed there that we were aware of their launch plan. Um, and don't foresee, you know, any issues on our part. Cause their plan meets our, meets our policy requirements.
All right, any questions for Mr. Schmidt on this, um, acknowledgement? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Our motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Krieger. Seconded by Mr. Schrock. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Lewis, can you please call the roll?
Excuse me, yes, sir. Mrs. Berman.
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger.
Yes.
Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Schrock.
Yes.
Mr. Wiggins.
Yes.
That is approved. All right. On to the next item, moving to donation of insulation and prairie grass, Mr. Schmidt.
Yes, so, um, in partnership with the. Uh, third grade, uh, staff, specifically Mrs. Perchescu, who's been doing, uh, a lot with our students. Uh, being out and studying different habitats, uh, we received information from, uh, Alex Patton, a. Uh, graduate of Northridge, uh, in the Monarch Meadows Native Plant Nursery, uh, of a donation to create. A, uh, habitat, um, outside the library area, um, of prairie grass and, and wildflowers that are native to Ohio. Um, they will, uh, Monarch Meadows, uh, will, um, take care of preparing the ground. Uh, doing the planning, um, and then ongoing maintenance, uh, which is essentially once a year mowing. Mowing the area down, uh, would be our responsibility. I've worked with Mr. Lewis and, and Mr. Liggett on that. Um, but we think this is a good, a good opportunity to add an outdoor learning lab, uh, for our students and, and to be able to have this. Habitat available, uh, and it'll support not only elementary, but our, our high school, talking with Mrs. Uh, Neff. Ms. Neff and the, uh, ag science program and, and things like that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Is there any questions for Mr. Schmidt on this? Um, I just have one, Mr. Lewis, this is, uh. Okay, from the facility standpoint, Mr. Liggett's aware.
Yeah, we ran through and we had some parameters we walked around, just wanted to make sure we left a, a mowing area around the building so that. Prairie grass wasn't right up on the building and then he. Critters and such that, that might develop in there, end up inside, so, uh, that was pretty much. The concern that we had.
We'll have, we'll have a path.
Yes.
Around the perimeter of the building, uh, which also helps access to study the area as well, so.
Any other questions? Uh, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make it.
Motion by Mrs. Berman. Seconded by Mrs. Krieger. Any further discussion on this item?
I was just gonna add that it's already a very, if you guys have not been back there in the little amphitheater area, it's already so pretty and relaxing. This is just gonna add to it. It's a very cool. Experience for. All of our K through twelve, preschool through twelve.
Yeah, I really think that'd be a great addition. Additional discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Lewis, please call a roll.
This is Berman.
Yes.
This is Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Schrock.
Yes.
Mr. Wiggins.
Yes.
That is approved.
Thank you.
Moving on to item ten point three, we approve the second reading of the Neola policies.
So policies as presented last time, I do understand that there were, there's a question about the consistency of. Uh. Reference to students' consistency of language on, on that piece, Mrs. Berman ended up dating me, Mr. Hart, that you had that question.
Yeah, I was reading through the policies and, I mean, it was frustrating because we have a fifty-eight page document that was not searchable.
It was not?
No. Just troublesome, but, uh.
So that I have.
That would be helpful.
But getting through, uh.
All right, that was not, that, sorry about that.
That's okay, um, but, but getting through the, uh. I don't know, approximately half of it. A- and, and I, it really started to become an issue in the, uh, the college credit plus. Plus one, and it seemed like the, the primary thrust of the amendments of that or the changes that policy were. To remove the, the, the he, she pronouns and generally replace it with the student. But there were a number of instances where we replaced it with there. Instead of, instead of the student and. I, uh, we ought, if we're gonna do it, we ought to be consistent and if we're, and if we're not. Uh, I mean, the student is a much better idea in, in my mind than, 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 than there. I think that was a, that was an improvement. I, I've always hated he, she. Uh, but as, um, a, a, a journal editor candidate once said, uh, what do you propose we replace it with? Well, that identifier of student. Now, when we got to the, the, I don't know if it was the next one, but. Down the road where we were talking about students with disabilities, the policy. We, 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 we seem like we, we lost that and, and so we were back to some he, she's. Um, except, and I think it was in that one that, that we, we started to go from describing the student. And then we went to the child. It seems like that should also be consistent, uh, and then at some point, um. Uh, so, some, some there's came in and then we had. One place where the parents were referred to as there, where we, you know, we, we were consistent with parents.
Yeah.
Um, so those are, those are examples that, that I found. And I also had a couple of substantive issues, but, uh. It, it seems best that we, uh. Jamie, you indicated you thought it was, it was reasonable to pull this tonight.
Yeah, that's why.
And so I, I, I would move that we table it.
That's fine.
Uh, to, to, to.
Thank.
Work out those, I mean, they're, they're, in my mind, they're nature, in the nature of typos, but I think if we have one that's searchable, then we'd be able to. Search for those terms and make sure that, that, you know, we got them all.
Yep, absolutely.
And, um, and then. I can, I can reach out about the, 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 the substantive issues that I have. We don't need to belabor the board meeting one for, for that. We're not gonna be making a decision on it tonight.
Okay. Good enough.
Yeah, so I have a motion by Mr. Hart and a second by Mrs. Berman to table this discussion item. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. I'll oppose same side. Motion passes without dissent. We will push this back. Item ten point four, approval of the May five-year forecast. I think we knew this was coming. Um, we are missing a signature line on this, but. Uh, in the agenda, but I think it's pretty clear that we need to approve this from the presentation earlier.
And I've gone round and round and round on, uh, on, on this five-year forecast and this morning I thought that I probably would be opposing it, but I'm gonna actually move to approve it.
And I will second.
Motion by Mr. Hart, seconded by Mrs. Berman. Do you have any further discussion on the five-year forecast?
Quickly, I just want to say that the reason that I was gonna be opposing it, I thought was because of the deficit spending issue. Uh, working through it with Mr. Lewis, listening to the discussion of it tonight. Understanding that we're, we're, we're back under a hundred thousand. And, and Mr. Wiggins, your comment about, that, that I synthesized down to, to cutoff. Uh, causes me to, to, to think that, uh, and, and, and hearing the commitment from Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Lewis to work together. Um, to, to eliminate it, uh. Caused me to, to, to believe that we're in good hands here and, and, I mean, I, it, I, I echo Mr. Lewis's thoughts going forward that, that, that we, that we. Somehow find a way, I mean, set, set, set some artificial deadlines and, and get this done sooner so that we, you know, so that we have a final number when, when we're in here. But that's not where we are this, this, this time. Um, the fall, you can always move it back November if you have to. Uh, I know we'd rather not, but, um, but anyway, um, but yeah, I, I, I think we're there.
Yeah, I, I agree, um, the, the tremendous amount of work and lifting that came from. Our administrative team to put this together, uh, deserves mention and, uh. You know, it, it's, it shows that despite the fact that we're in this weird timing situation where we're gonna have to. Show numbers that maybe aren't quite as favorable as they actually are, um, it, it shows that we're in a, in a good, uh. Position as a district and not, not in a circumstance where we're gonna be running into, into trouble anywhere, anytime in the near future, so. I, I think that this is, uh, uh. Uh, it's a very important exercise, but it's also, um, a very difficult exercise, I think. I don't think Mr. Lewis would disagree with that comment.
No, I would not.
So, uh, grateful for the effort that goes, that goes into this forecast. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Lewis, please call a roll.
Mrs. Berman.
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Schrock.
Yes.
Mr. Wiggins.
Yes.
And the five-year forecast is approved.
Thank you all.
Thank you. I'm, I'm completely genuine about the appreciation for the level of effort that goes into that. That is a big lift. Unscheduled visitors, I don't believe we have any.
No, sir.
Okay. Number twelve, any business initiated by members of the board?
Not really. The only thing I have was a question, since we already had the list of graduating students, I didn't see the date or the time for people to come.
We will, we will reiterate.
The invite.
Yes, but I can, I can remind everyone, so we are.
Good idea.
Memorial Day weekend, which will be, uh, twenty-eighth at two o'clock at the fairgrounds. Um, also will, will mention that, um. In, in trying to balance things, so our plans are at the, plans are at the fairgrounds. If for some reason by Friday evening. The weather is not looking favorable for that, we have, um, had a family that has. Secured staging from Autobahn University that they're willing to bring over, and so we would shift things. Indoors and our sound people would move, uh, indoors as, as well, um. To, back to the gym where we were before. Students' preference is still to have it at the fairgrounds, but if, uh, if. The weather's cooperated with us and we think it will, but there is a, there is that backup plan, so that'll be a, a Friday decision. But right now, fairgrounds. With blue skies and happy celebration.
Great, thank you. Any other business initiated by members of the board? Moving right along to our announcements.
We don't have any announcements other than the, the long list that was in the building, updates of all the, the end of the year, uh. Celebration pieces, so I don't have any other announcements.
Great, thank you. All right, thirteen-two, reaffirm the time and place of the next Board of Education meeting. Do the easy one first. Our regular meeting is gonna be Tuesday, June twentieth, six thirty P M. Um, I do want to take the opportunity to let the board know that I will be absent from that meeting. And then we have a special meeting that we are going to try to, um, try to, we are going to coordinate. Um, a work session for working with the, um, athletic boosters on the, um. Uh, visioning and next steps of the, the stadium project. Um. Did we decide that we were also going to add, uh, security onto that work session?
We, we, I've had conversations with the sheriff's office, if, if we want to try to combine that. Now, we, you know, when I have a date, I'll, I'll work with them, but I've had conversations with Captain Barbuto, uh. And his team about coming in and meeting with the board, um, and that can happen. June, July, it can, it can happen at any point, but they're prepared for that.
And then. We have another thing to talk about for our work session, and that is, uh, Mr. Massey. Steve Massey would like to come and talk to the board, um, as well. So that needs to be plugged in, if possible during the work session. If not, um. We probably, uh, we have a couple other dates, but as we, I have his dates, I should say, that we can talk through that. That would be another item that we need to, uh, time for. And he is not available at the board meetings, June twentieth, so thus the work, I'm bringing it now.
So we have three large subjects that are too large to pack into our normal meeting agenda. And that would be the intent, intent of having a work session for these.
And if, if three, if three items. Excuse me, if three items are. Too much for that evening and we want to put. Safety with the regular June meeting, that, you know, that could be an option as well.
That could, that might be.
Oh, Jeff won't be at the radio meeting, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
I forgot that.
That's, that's okay. I don't want to stand in the way of progress. My thought is that. Safety and security at the top of the list and that.
It seems like, it works. It seems like safety and security is something that, that you really ought to be present for.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I would, I would recommend it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm thinking that too. I forgot about that.
I definitely, like I said, I don't want my personal circumstances standing in the way of, of board progress, so.
What do you guys think? Do you think these three items are too much for one meeting? Too big?
Trying to be respectful of everybody's time. I know it's gonna be too much to cram into one of our, into a regular meeting. But at the same time, is it too much to cram into a special and try to tackle all at once? Trying not to have multiple specials for these.
I, I have no sense of how long the stadium part might take.
I, I mean, I think we could do.
Okay, okay, then the captain at a time, I think if you're gonna do it, you'd.
We can, we can assign time to it and then work it around that. I, I would think that. Forty-five minutes should be sufficient. If, if that sounds palatable, if we need to trim that down, we could. Uh, from that standpoint, um. It's basically making sure everyone has the same update, same information, uh, and we know. We know the plan for how to get to the finish line.
Cause we don't, I've never seen the plans. I haven't, you know, there's a lot that's happened that I'm not up to.
And we can.
Up, you know, to speed on.
Independent of that, we can, you know, I, I've offered. We can meet with people to, to share details.
That's true.
But, but. Given the importance and the questions that have been around this whole piece, I think it's important for everyone. Or as many people as possible be on the same page. So we can do some pre-work. I don't want anyone to walk into that surprised, so I'm, I'm happy to do the pre-work. So that that can be a, a thirty-minute joint conversation, uh, from that standpoint.
I don't think it's a, could be a meeting talking about how we're gonna, where we're gonna put something. That's not it. And it's really gonna be around.
I mean, I think ideally, having all three of them at the same time would be nice, but. Keeping in mind that all three things require other people's time and schedule to be here, you know? So I just don't want to waste somebody's time if we take too long and for.
We definitely want to create a schedule and then be committed to those chunks. So whether it's a thirty-minute chunk or forty-five minute chunk for the.
As a stadium. Feel like one of them might not be. I don't know that, Mr. Massey, we could put a time limit on that one.
That's right.
Necessarily, is where I'm thinking.
I would put the first, uh, half timeframe on the first two and then go into.
Yeah.
Executive session.
And then we'd be telling him when to show up.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yes.
So we're respecting everybody's time by giving slots and saying, you know, show up at this time, show up at this time.
So I would say if, if we had. What, what is the comfort level, thirty or forty-five minutes for the stadium?
I think.
There's a lot of.
So, so.
To make sure that we're all on the same page about.
Okay. And I think, I think for, in, in the conversations we've had with the, the sheriff's office. Again, they, they have information to, to share. You'll have questions, I think, I think forty-five minutes works for that as well. From that standpoint.
You can confirm that with them.
I will.
Yep. And you can run the the same timing issue past the booster.
Yes.
Yeah.
It'll be a long meeting, but it'll avoid us having to have additional specials to. To make up for these.
Or or tagging it onto a regular board meeting when we're already this late and then we're gonna be that much later.
Right.
So then is the start time six thirty, since that's our typical start time?
Well, what date could we do? Maybe we better pick a date and maybe we can. Maybe we can scoot it up. At six or something.
Yeah.
Depending on what day we. I'd be willing to start earlier, is I guess where I'm so. Um, well. I think you've put in your weekly updates that you would like to look at the first week of June.
Yes, Mister Lewis and I are on vacation the second week of June. We're in the third week of the span and fourth.
Yeah.
It seems like the first week is when at least this body is all available.
You available?
As far as I know.
Okay. Um.
I'll throw out the fifth or the eighth.
Fifth or the eighth, so Mister Massey is not available on the fifth. Um. He is available on the eighth. So. How is everybody on the eighth? Let's start, I guess.
I'm good any day that week, so.
I'll just be older.
I know, someone's birthday that week, by the way.
What month you talk?
June, June eighth. Are you available, June eighth?
June eighth.
It's a Thursday.
Uh, June eighth is a Friday.
It's a Thursday.
According to this, I think.
You may, you may be in twenty.
Year.
Maybe in twenty-four.
Never mind. Thursday, I'm not sure.
Uh, Jeff's an unsure on that.
Just put it down.
Six o'clock, do you think, or do you, would you need to do six thirty if it's a possible?
Six o'clock.
I'm good at six.
Six is good, six is fine.
The June eighth, six o'clock. Right here in the district office.
Sounds good.
Anything more we need to cover with that? All right, thank you. Time and place for our next uh committee meetings. Um, facilities, we have Wednesday, May twenty-fourth. That's right, we did change that. Um, six P M in the district office. Finance will be moved up a week, June seventh. At six P M here in the district office.
We're not gonna send a Northridge jet to pick Mister Lewis up and bring him back for that meeting?
Hey, you saw the five-year forecast. There's no jet in that mine, I am. Um, unless anyone objects, I see no reason to move into executive session this evening. The one thing that is not missing from this agenda is number fifteen point one, adjourning the meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion that we even adjourn.
Motion by Mister Schrock.
I'm happy to second that.
Seconded by Mister Hart. All in favor of adjourning the meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Knew that one would pass. Motion passes without dissent. We are adjourned at eight thirty-four P M. Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening.